Good evening, everyone. Hey, good evening. Hello. Today is Thursday, April 1st, 2021, and I would like to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education. Will everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Boddy? Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Hodgins?
We will come back to that.
Mrs. Lawrence? Oh, duh. I'm sorry. Mrs. Lilge?
We're going to wait a few minutes to make sure all our Zoom attendees are joining us. So, members of our community know we are doing a hybrid meeting this evening, so there are five board members who are present in person tonight, and some other board members will be participating via Zoom. And I'm going to give them a minute to make sure that they can hear me and they're with And I'm also going to be looking into whether we can continue to use Zoom for our meetings in the future after the pandemic is over. I know a lot of people, in particular, a lot of staff members who don't live within the Channel 21 radius have indicated that they really like to have these meetings on Zoom, so we'll see if we can't keep that available in the future. I don't know if the people on Zoom are actually hearing what I'm saying right now, but who knows? They can feel it in their hearts.
I can hear you.
I know we're broadcasting.
They can't hear you, Madam President. Can you hear us? Can they not hear us in the boardroom, Superintendent?
Any additions to the agenda from anyone who's...
They must not be able to hear us.
Okay.
Gabe, can you hear in the boardroom? Mrs. Willis asked if you could hear her in the boardroom.
They can't hear us.
Good evening, everyone. I can't hear you, but we're working on it. Can you hear me? Could you hear what I was saying before?
No.
Oh, cool. Okay. Then you heard that sick rhyme that I dropped? No. I didn't do that. Rachel, will you say something? Unmute yourself and say something.
Can I drop a sick rhyme? Nope. Well, maybe I should try it.
We know that we have people participating via Zoom. However, we cannot see nor hear them right now, so just stick with us for a couple more minutes as we get this figured out, please. Sam, say something, please.
Can you hear us?
Hey, kinda. Oh, was that him or something? That was these guys? Sam, say something again, please.
This is Sam Sinofropi.
Sam, can you say something again, please?
You know, I'm in two spots on the screen now, too. Can't hear me.
I can't hear you, Sam.
Oh, good. Hi, Nathan, how you doing?
Crazy day. I had exactly two minutes between my last work meeting and this board meeting.
Well, take a deep breath. You got a break here. Hi, Robin.
Hello. Happy Thursday.
Yep. Well, that's interesting that we could hear each other, but they can't hear us.
Very much so. And it was two of me. There I am again.
There you go.
Sam, you know how my mom thinks everything revolves around her. When you said, "Hi, Robin," she's like, "Oh, hey, Robin." No, the other one.
Oh, hey, Ramaya. Okay.
I'm so sorry, Mrs. Lewis.
Okay. We're back in action. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, gosh.
Dr. Burrows?
I'm here, but we're getting a lot of vibration, a lot of feedback.
Okay. Ms. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Present.
Mrs. Lilge?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
So, I can't hear any of you. Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
And Mrs. Willis? So, I could not hear Ms. Hodgins, Mr. Lopez, nor Dr. Rodriguez.
They're all there. I just saw them sitting there.
Okay. Very good.
Let me go tell Mrs. Willis, then, that we can't hear them.
Oh. Coram, is present.
Thank you. Dr. Burrows, are you still getting feedback? Robin, can you hear me? I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me clearly? Is there any feedback?
There's an echo. I did. Sorry. I thought that was the echo.
Nathan, how's the sound? Nathan, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but there's a lot of reverberation.
Nathan, can you say something?
Something. Can you hear me? Nope.
I'm going to ask Rachel, Nathan, and Robin, if you have any additions to the agenda, please text me. Lynette, do we have any public comment this evening?
No, ma'am.
Sam, can you shake your head yes or no?
No.
No public comment? Okay. Sam, you can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Then we are going to take a little bit of liberty with the schedule this evening, and let's get committee reports done. Mr. Lopez, if you would like to start with your Facilities Committee and Promise Committee reports, that would be wonderful, if you're ready.
Facilities Committee met on March 12th, and we have in today's packet a number of requests for approval that are listed in your agenda. Other than that, we talked about the Eversol Pavilion and an amphitheater that's being planned. I think they're looking at about $450,000 for those projects, but the Eversol Foundation is doing a fundraiser, and we're going to work with them. So, the district will not pay that amount, the whole amount, but there'll be a combination of fundraisers and so on and so forth. So, we discussed that a little bit. On the Ed Center, a new proposal is coming in, and this proposal is through the Lansing Housing Commission and will, in partnership with two other organizations. So, we didn't have it, but it's coming, so I think we talked about that previously. Otto, the Otto Building is still being looked at by a nonprofit organization, and they're taking the next steps, and I think they're talking about a capital campaign for that. But, again, this is all just conversation, updates, nothing is in writing, so we will have more on that in the coming months. We spoke about the Eastern Drain Project and the Sexton Upgrades as well. Those were updates. It wasn't anything that we have... In addition to whatever we have to approve today, this is an ongoing process in both That is pretty much what I have for this report, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions, please?
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Do we have to approve... What do we need to approve tonight on all this that you are talking about?
Yes. We're going to...
If you can hear me, I could help, Mr. Lopez.
Recommendations for the public to know, as well. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, is the Guyer Park Security Entry, the Sheridan Road Security Entry, the Kevanaw Elementary Boiler and Roof Projects, the Bigman Center Condensing Unit, and the Sinking Fund Contracted Services Agreement with TOTCO. So, those are the things that are up for action tonight, and that's with prior discussion by the Facilities Committee and recommendation for approval.
And this contracted agreement is for how long?
Can we talk about that when we get to...
Okay.
We'll go to that other...
Okay. Good.
That's it for the Facilities Committee, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Do you want me to go into the Promise?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. The Promise Board we met on March 18th, and I'll just give you a couple highlights in terms of what's being planned for the Promise Foundation and the Promise folks. Chris Holman is planning the golf tournament again, which is scheduled for August 4th. So, that's a pretty good thing that's happening the last two, three years. We've had that outing, and it's been profitable. Thank you, Chris Holman, for all that he does in putting this together, along with our friend from Dean Transportation. Another item that I think that happened was that Director of the Promise, Director of Promise, Justin Shaheen, was evaluated, and his evaluation was very good. It was presented to the Board, and he was offered a three-year contract to continue until 2024, and it was approved by the... The Board agreed with the recommendation of the Executive Committee. In addition, let's see, we heard about from Terry Bernetto, who works very closely with Justin and Promise, of course. They just work every day on this and trying to get our kids through the pathways and the pathway finders and all that, so that our kids can be successful once they graduate from high school and go into either college or community college or four-year college. The other... Another thing that is happening is that a Promise internship program has been initiated with the leadership of the Excellent Fund representative on the Promise Board, and I think they've started... I think they have one individual already hired through that internship, but that internship should grow, and we're inviting other organizations that are certainly part of the Promise to open internships for our students as they progress in their education. Going back to Terry, she reported that the dinner was a success, and this dinner was planned where, instead of having a Zoom meeting with the Promise Scholars, after the dinner, or for them to come and pick it up, actually, it was taken to them. It was delivered by Promise Board members, and so the parents or dating have to come or anyone for the dinner that was delivered. At the same time, they were in the Zoom meeting, and there was a lot of discussion about, obviously, you know, financial aids and all the things that entails, you know, starting their post-secondary career. Terry reported that it was very successful, had a very good number of participants. Let's see. There will be some videos featuring Promise Scholars, and it's a day in the life of, you know? And so, different scholars will talk about their day, and those will be posted on the Promise website and others, so that people can view them. And hopefully, I'm thinking that maybe they could also be transmitted on our local access channel, so they have more viewers. Those are the highlights from the last meeting, Madam Chair. If, Dr. Rodriguez, do you have anything to...
A little bit. I think we approved the contract for three years for Justin.
Yeah.
And this three-years contract, he has different offers for other companies, but he decided to stay with Promise and spend about half an hour extending us about the vision and mission and project that he is going to have during these three years. But I think that maybe the Board sent a letter of congratulation to him to tell him that we know that he is going to be three years, that we are going to be controlling enough. We are going to be celebrating with them, but I represent the Board and Promise, I want this Board to be aware in what is going on, everything, because, and then, our students. I also ask the Superintendent, Board President, and all of you, and Guillermo also, we have Mr. Dean and Justin to come in front of us and give them time to tell us what is the vision for the future, what they are doing, and how we can help in that process. More members for other organizations are now attending, and it's incredible. Michigan State had two representatives. We had now LACU also, that is going to have a member. We have more people coming to participate. Then I think we also received more than $600,000 from the government for them to be used for our students. Then I think that we had to thank Justin for what he's doing.
Thank you for mentioning that. Yes. It was reported before that we were expecting a good tax capture this year, and next year will be better, we hope. But like Dr. Nina said, we have over $600,000 in tax capture, which we've been talking about that for a while now. But we got it. Now we have the check. The other thing that Dr. Rodriguez is talking about, participation on the Promise Board, our newest member is Carmen Argersinger, she's with Delta Dental, and very impressive bio that she has, and she was very happy and very willing to serve on the Promise Board. And these are really companies that will also, you know, hopefully, open their doors for internships, so that our students can go and learn, and I'm hoping that also the city and other governmental entities would be places where we could place our Promise Scholars as interns. On-the-job training is very good, and it would be very valuable. So, we continue with that, and yes, although second Dr. Rodriguez's statements, you know, Shaheen Justin has a very, very nice presentation on the vision, mission of the Promise, and I think that it would be excellent if we could have him here, so that that could be replayed and replayed in our channel. It's very inspiring, and of course, you know, the Board kind of, you know, is the one that, like us, you know, they approve these kinds of things, but it is very inspiring, from the perspective of the executive director and how he views his work. And that really was one of the areas of the evaluation, and like I said, you know, we were happy to learn that he chose to stay with us and accept a three-year contract.
Also, because Guillermo and I, we are part of the Executive Committee, he is in the Fund, and I am in the Promise, that we evaluate him. Also, I don't know, Ms. President, if, in order to write a letter, we need the motion or we don't need the motion, I would like to have a copy to Mr. Dean, because he's the president. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. He will be here on the 15th, too. Perfect. Good.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what is the title of Mr. Shaheen? Because when he was higher, he was higher because we needed his help at the time for Superintendent Church that at that time. Now that we don't have that, what is his title now, official title? We did this through New Year's. Is he working in PR?
Ms. Hodgins, you know we're talking about Justin Shaheen, the Director of the Lansing Promise, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
He's the executive director of the Lansing Promise.
Yes, yes. But who pays his salary?
The Lansing Promise.
They promised. Okay. That was my... Okay.
He's the chief executive officer of Promise.
Okay.
A nonprofit 501(c)(2) organization.
Yeah. Okay.
Sam, can you say something?
I'm here.
Again, please. Again, please.
Good evening. For those of us on the screen, don't you think we should just, if we talked louder, they could hear us?
Sam, again, please.
Hello? Can you hear me yet? Hello?
Sam, can you go ahead with your report from Superintendent? Is that what you mean?
Can you hear? You can hear me right now? Oh, okay. It is with sadness that I report a 16-year-old student of ours died result of a homicide earlier this week. I would like to do just a moment of silence for him, please. Thank you. We wish him and his family well during this trying time. Sedexo Magic passed out 38,000 meals today. It was our first day of seven meals passed out at one time. I want to thank Sedexo Magic for providing meals to all of our students. Spring break starts tomorrow for students, family, and staff. We wish all of you a happy and safe break from classes. And now, what is self-care? Self-care is the practice of deliberately protecting one's own well-being and happiness, particularly during times of stress. Self-care refers to activities and practices that we can engage in on a regular basis to reduce stress and maintain and enhance physical and emotional health. The benefits of self-care tend to improve our immunity, increase positive thinking, and make us less susceptible to stress, depression, anxiety, and other emotional health issues. The executive team will now provide some tips on basic self-care activities you might want to try in the coming days. Sergio Kep, please.
Good evening. Did you know regular exercise has incredible health benefits, including improved mood, improved muscle and bone health, increased energy levels, improved memory and brain function, improved relaxation and sleep? The bottom line is exercise can offer many benefits that can improve nearly every aspect of your health. So, please, take your time for yourself, put your tennis shoes on, or find a bicycle and get outside. And sunshine is also proven to improve your health. So, finally, to find an exercise routine, if you want to find a good exercise routine, please consult with your physician. Thank you.
Thanks, Sergio. Suzy Corbin?
Thank you. Good evening. Did you know that mindfulness, the practice of being fully present in the moment, noticing thoughts and letting them go without judging, can help you make the most of your self-care routine? Spend time with your loved ones that are sitting across from you and be present. Allow yourself no judgment. Enjoy the food as you eat it, notice your surroundings, and just breathe.
Thank you. Let's see, I gotta make sure I get this in the right order. Cordelia Black.
Good evening. Did you know getting a proper night of rest, sleep, is essential to your health? Too many people are sleep deprived, and it takes a toll on your physical and mental health. Sleep scientists recommend that adults need six, at least six to eight hours of sleep every night. Your body needs time to rest and renew. Sleep is known as the third pillar of wellness along with exercise and nutrition. Getting an adequate amount of sleep can help maximize performance, prevent negative thinking, irritability, and even mental illness like depression and anxiety. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Benavides.
Good evening, everyone. Did you know that reading is one of the most effective forms of self-care? A study taken at Surrey University found that reading reduced stress levels by up to 68%, even above listening music or going for a walk. Just six minutes of reading reduces heart rate and muscle tension. Reading gives us a peaceful time and space to focus on ourselves. I hope over spring break, everyone picks up a good book and enjoys some time to decompress.
Thank you. Dr. Camila Diaz.
Good evening. Did you know hydration or drinking enough water every day is essential to the proper functioning of both your mind and your body? Drinking enough water each day is crucial for many reasons: to regulate body temperature, keep joints lubricated, prevent infections, deliver nutrients to cells, and keep organs functioning properly. Being well hydrated also improves sleep quality, cognition, including reasoning and understanding, and your overall mood. So, reach for that glass or bottle of ice cold water and feel the benefits pour into your body.
Thank you. Dr. Delsa Chapman.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi, and good evening. Did you know that healthy eating habits are an integral part of self-care and can lead to a longer, more fulfilling life? Nutrition experts report five, yes, just five simple tips that all of us can implement into our lifestyles. Tip one: prepare most of your meals at home using whole or minimally processed foods. Choose from a variety of different proteins to keep things interesting. Tip number two: make an eating plan each week. That is the key to fast, easy meal preparations that are guaranteed to probably be more healthy. Tip three: choose recipes with plenty of fruits and vegetables. Your goal is to fill half your plate with vegetables and fruit at every meal. Tip four: avoid sugary drinks, and instead, as Dr. Diaz shared with us, drink water. And finally, tip number five: eat smaller meals more often. Eat at least three meals a day with snacks in between. And remember, breakfast is the most important meal of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Sinicropi. We do have a recorded video message from a board member that I'd like to play right now.
This is Dr. Farhan Bhatti. I want to take a moment to issue my sincere and heartfelt apology to Lansing's deputy superintendent, Dr. Delsa Chapman, for a comment I made during our recent superintendent candidate interviews. I made a comment that while I was fully supporting Mr. Sheldonner to be our next superintendent, I hoped that Ms. Benavides would stay on as deputy superintendent so that the district could continue to benefit from her leadership. I made this comment because at the time, I believed Dr. Chapman, who of course is currently our deputy superintendent, was not going to be returning to the district next year. When Dr. Chapman withdrew her name from consideration during the superintendent interview process, I misunderstood her email to mean that not only was she withdrawing her name from consideration for the superintendent position, but that she was actually not intending to return to the district for the next school year at all. As a result, I went into the second round of superintendent interviews, thinking that we had openings for both the superintendent and the deputy superintendent positions. Dr. Chapman has been a tireless advocate for Lansing's children for many years. This school district has benefited immensely from her leadership. When I came to find out that I had upset her with my comments, I felt deeply saddened and embarrassed. I therefore want to publicly apologize to Dr. Chapman. Dr. Chapman, I sincerely ask for your forgiveness, and I intended no harm. I misinterpreted your email, and I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, okay. We're gonna go back to committee reports, and we will come to Mrs. Willis and the Personnel Committee.
Good evening, everyone, and I just realized you can't see me very well. But in your packets this evening, you have your Personnel Committee report with information for your review and two pages that are on the board's docket this evening for approval under the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Okay, I was just talking to make sure that there wasn't any issues with just people being able to get off mute with all of the hearing challenges today. Madam President, is it okay if I move on to the Equity Committee?
Yes, thank you.
So, just as an update, Equity Committee has not met since the last board meeting, but there has been progress made in the next steps in working with our, what's the word I want to say? With our contractor, on April 15th, there will be a startup meeting with, between the board and, the board and, I'm sorry, not the board, between the district and West Ed, to have our kickoff meeting with, I'm trying to find the name of the, oh, the name of the role of the folks that they were gonna play. Having a little bit of us.
Mrs. Willis, may I help you with that? It's called the Equity Audit Administrators.
Thank you. Between Equity Audit Administrators, which will be district employees, and the employees at West Ed, to finalize the scope of the project and all of the things that we will be working on. I am sorry, that shadow is terrible. Let's sit on my floor. Between the Equity Audit Administrators and the district. So, we're really looking forward to finalizing the scope of the audit and getting the ball rolling and having all the representation that we need to get started. And that's all from the Equity Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Moving on to Policy Committee, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy Committee will meet April 14 from 9 o'clock to 10:30. We already, the board members, they are part of the Policy Committee, they already have the link and everything for that day. We are going to update several policies. That is all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our consent agenda for this evening, our consent agenda includes the approval of minutes from March 2nd, March 3rd, March 4th, March 18th, and March 20th, board meetings. We had a busy month of March. It also includes receipt and approval of the Treasurers' report for February and approval of expenditures as presented in the packet, receipt and approval of the Personnel Report, and approval of the following bid recommendations: Geyer Park secure entry, Sheridan Road secure entry, Sallyport, Cordelia taught me that word, Kavanaugh Elementary boiler and roof, Beekman Center condensing unit, and the sinking fund contracted services agreement with Todd Co. May I have a motion? I'm just gonna ask for a motion and support from people in this room to avoid having to mute and unmute us.
Madam President?
Mr. Lopez.
I move that we approve the consent agendas presented with the caveat of the Finance Committee, of the Finance Report.
Support. The Treasurers' report, you mean?
The Treasurers' report.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Lopez that we remove the Treasurers' report for discussion. Is that what you would like to do?
Yeah, as usual.
Or just have Dr. Burrows?
Right.
Talk about it like he normally does?
Right.
Gotcha.
He has the opportunity to.
Of course.
Expand on his report.
Sure. It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Mrs. Lilji. Any discussion? And I'm gonna ask for discussion from people in this room first, so then we can play this game. Any discussion? Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. In the last sinking fund contracted service agreement, they said no more than $70,000. But we don't have the number, really. Could be 69,900 or what is the limit?
Well, that, I think we might have to ask, because we reviewed the contract, or at least we saw the contract, at the Facilities Committee, but it's really a board issue, not a Facilities Committee issue. So, I guess if Sam could answer that question.
We have an existing agreement with Todd Co. to serve as owner's rep for the sinking fund project, similar to what we have with Barry Roney for bond projects. Frequently, our bid recommendations are worded in a way that the dollar amount is not to exceed $50,000, $70,000, whatever the case may be. So, it's very common that we have language such as this. Also, I imagine that if, for some reason, sinking fund projects ground to a halt during the tenure of this agreement, if we didn't have any work for Mr. Co. to do, then we wouldn't be paying him for that work. So, if, you know, he had given us $40,000 of services, and then we had no more projects for him to do, that's what we would pay him. So, I think it's impossible to say exactly what the dollar amount will be for the duration of this agreement, but it could be up to $70,000 from the time that this is signed to March 30th of '22.
Thank you, Madam President, and it's glad for us to know and for the public, but nobody can do it better yet than Mr. Co., and I am very pleased that he continued working in the district. But thank you for your explanation, too.
Of course. Any other discussion from people in this room? Okay. Dr. Burrows, would you like to briefly talk about the Treasurers' report, please?
Very briefly, if my cat will let me have my Treasurers' narrative back. Okay. Beginning cash and investment balance was about $26 million. Receipts totaled 12, all disbursements were 15. The ending general fund cash and investment balance on February 28th was $23.9 million. This was about a little over $6 million higher than it was the same time last year, and we did not receive any donations this month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows. Any other, any other discussion or comments regarding consent agenda from Mrs. Willis or Mrs. Moore? I'm gonna assume that you're saying no, because I can't see you or hear you.
No. Can you hear me now?
Mrs. Moore, would, yep, anything? Anything, Mrs. Moore?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great. Then I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll on the consent agenda, but I'm gonna just go ahead and call the roll in this room, and then the clerk can call the roll for the attendees via Zoom. We're really winging it tonight, guys, and I appreciate you sticking with me. Mrs. Lilji?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez? Mrs. Lawrence? Yes. Thank you.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis? Yes. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now I'm going to, I'm making sure I've covered everything out of order on that part of the agenda. All right, we're to new business. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Willis so she can address the superintendent evaluation.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just realized as I'm reviewing the timeline that I said that we have a meeting next week, and I'm not sure if the board wants to meet next week with it still being spring break. But anyway, in your board packets this evening, you have a superintendent evaluation timeline with a proposed timeline for how we're gonna move forward to evaluate our superintendent, which would be our current superintendent, Mr. Sam Sinicropi. So, we are, the proposal is that we complete the evaluation very similar, in the same fashion that we did last year, which will be the board completing individual evaluations using the enclosed rubric prior to the meeting, and then coming to the meeting and participating in a closed session evaluation. You guys, my child just ran across in front of me and unraveled an entire roll of paper towel, like it's not a pandemic. Someone help me. Okay, I'm sorry. Jesus. Sorry. Okay, so we would complete the evaluation prior to coming to the meeting on the 8th, and then with the permission of the superintendent, we would, we would go into closed session if it's requested by the superintendent. And then we would complete our evaluation by consensus. You guys all have a hard copy of the evaluation, but for folks who want to complete it electronically so it tallies for you and you can keep electronic comments, let me know, and I'll send you the electronic copy. I see, Ms. Moore, shaking your head. I'll make sure I send it to you, an electronic copy, but anyone else needs one, I'll be sure to send it to you. But also in your packet is the proposed timeline, and again, my apologies, it did not dawn on me till this morning that I had suggested that we meet on the 8th. So, that is a good thing that we do this together as a proposed timeline, because I'm certainly open to amend this if it's the will of the board to not meet next week, given that it's spring break. So, Madam President, that's it as far as I have for the superintendent evaluation. I will make one other note. One thing that's different from last year, I recall during last year's evaluation that my colleague, Mr. Lopez, mentioned several times that it was difficult to evaluate the superintendent because we didn't get the typical packet of information that we would have received with Yvonne, because Mrs. Sinicropi was interim, and then we didn't know that we were gonna have to evaluate them, and there was a lot of different things, so we didn't request a packet of information. I also did not request a packet of information this year. However, if board members have any specific questions that they have for the superintendent, I strongly encourage you to request any information that you need in advance of completing your rubric. Certainly make sure that you do that. What I will ask for the superintendent, that any information that's requested from one board member be provided to all board members, so that we're all able to have access to the same information. But that's it, Madam President, as far as discussing the plans for the superintendent evaluation.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. I would like to propose that we do not meet next week, and we shift everything that is supposed to take place on April 8th to April 15th, and then we can formally adopt the completed evaluation on May 6th. Is everyone in this room okay with that? Mrs. Lilji, do you have something to add?
I just had a question about requesting information, like how much lead time before the 15th? I probably couldn't be like, hey, I need eight questions answered the day before. Like, how much lead time would you like to request information?
How about, can we agree that if you would like additional information, you make that request of the superintendent by the 8th? you make that request of the superintendent by the 8th? Sam, is that okay with you? Or would you like it by early next week? He says that's okay with him. Okay. So if anyone would like additional information from the superintendent, please request that by April 8th. Otherwise, you will forever hold your peace. And then if you look at your timeline, we're going to shift, we're going to cross out the 8 and make it a 15, and then cross out April 15 and make it May 6th. Michaela, girl, you better get down. Rachel. Okay. Is that all right? Everybody clear on that? Mr. Lopez?
Yes. Did you say there will not be a meeting on April 8?
Correct. Next week is spring break.
Oh.
Woo!
Not for the board, though.
Not for the board. Just kidding. You guys can have the week off. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Moving on. If everybody's, yeah, we're good. Okay. Executive team contracts. Mr. Sinicropi?
Pat, you have the attachment that was set in the board packet. Just a couple of quick items of note. I did put in one contract. All the contracts are exactly the same, except for the financial part of it. And the financial part is in the overview that was presented. Just want to also remind everyone that the executive team did not take any raises last year. So I believe now it is appropriate that we do the appropriate things for their contracts for, that this contract will run from July 1 of 2021 to June 30 of 2022. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
It's not a question necessarily, but, you know, Dr. Body sent a recorded message, and I just wanted to know that he wasn't the only one that was thinking that, in terms of our candidates for superintendent. So, I mean, I had that question as well. But it's, I did ask the superintendent, and we spoke, and he gave me the information. This is okay. Well, because it was, I also, by the withdrawal message, I thought that she was on her way to another position outside of the district. So I also was under that impression, but I'm glad she's here, because, you know, I was kind of like, wow, this is interesting. So just to say that Dr. Body wasn't the only one that had that thought, anyway.
May I have a motion from someone in this room?
But, sir?
Dr. Rodriguez?
I move that the contract from the executive committee, executive team, will be approved by the board for the year 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
Could I just clarify? From July 1st of 2021 to June 30th?
July 1st, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Okay.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Mr. Lopez. I will again call the role for the people in this room. I'm going to switch it up this time. Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins? Yes?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence, yes. Lynette, if you could call? Yep.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to, yes?
I am glad that we approved these contracts. We know how much this team has worked the previous years. It is my hope, and I hope all board members here, this team continuing, working together, and discover what our students need and our teachers need, and everybody in education and Lancing School District needs for when we come back to a new face-to-face education. Then I congratulate them for what they did, but my expectations are high today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Moving on, we will briefly touch on the Iron Shore update, which I will just discuss this. If the board recalls, we've had an ongoing issue with, this is regarding the asbestos remediation measures that we took at the Eastern Fields Athletic Site. We recently authorized the Lerner Law Firm in New York to accept a settlement of $375,000. And as you can see in your letter, in your packet, the settlement that we have been offered is $400,000. So, good news for us. You can see the information regarding legal fees. If you recall, we've already been paid about $80,000 on that claim. So our net will be just over $425,000. So just to update the board, are there any questions on this Iron Shore settlement?
Not a question, Madam President, but just the fact that we did the right thing in pursuing this. You know, otherwise, we would be $80,000. It's, you know.
Yep. Absolutely. Okay. We are going to now, we're done with these things. We're going to recess into closed session. May I have a motion?
Then.
Dr. Rodriguez?
I move that the Board of Education of the Lancing School District move to a closed session according to the permitted by the Open Meeting Act.
Support.
Robin, Rachel, and Nathan.
Okay. I'm just going to go ahead and read the motion.
Close session coming to you.
Okay, I can read it.
For, okay, go ahead, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. That the Board of Education recesses into a closed session for the purpose of discussing personal matters.
You have the wrong motion. We have an updated agenda. You see it?
Where is that? I don't see it. Okay. That the Board of Education resesses into a closed session for the purposes pursuant to Open Meeting Act Session 8H to consider a written legal opinion from its attorney date March 31st, 2021, which is a sent from discussion and disclosure under FOIA Section 13G pursuant to Open Meeting Act Session 8C for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation and of a collective bargaining agreement. Thank you.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Mrs. Hodgins. Mr. Lopez? Any, I'm sorry, any discussion? No? Mr. Lopez? Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. The board is now in closed session. Good evening again, everyone. We are back. Amy, can you turn your mic off, please? We're back in open session, and we are to the approval of LSEA Economic Reopener. Can I have a motion from someone in this room?
Madam President?
Mrs. Lilge?
I move that the Board of Education.
Mrs. Lilge, can we have somebody else make this motion, actually?
Oh, yeah, I'm abstaining from this.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Yes. I move that we approve the tenant agreement with the LSEA agreement.
It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. Any further discussion on the LSEA Economic Reopener? I just want to point out that Mrs. Lilge will be abstaining from that vote this evening because her hubby is a teacher. Okay. Then I will call the role for the people in this. Yes, Dr. Burrows?
This question? I just want to say that I am absolutely thrilled that we're having an opportunity to restore planning time for the educators in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows. Yes, Mr. Lopez?
Yes. Among the things that are really good in this contract is that teachers will have some of their time back for planning session. And which is, you know, I guess we experimented and came back. And I think that's one of the good things that we see in this contract.
Hi, Madam President.
Yes.
I support definitely this move because teaching six hours is much different than first hour, the six hour. It's a lot of work for a teacher without having really time to planning for the other two or three hours that he or she has to teach. Then it's a win-win situation. It's a win-win situation for the teachers, a win situation for the students.
Okay. I will call the role in this room. Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mrs. Lilge is abstaining.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
What about me?
I'm so sorry, Dr.
I vote yes, too.
Okay. Motion passes.
That was really funny. I was remiss and did not ask for motions to approve the Iron Shore resolution or to adjust our dates for the superintendent evaluation. So I would like to ask for a motion on either one of those issues, if anyone would be so inclined.
Madam President.
Mrs. Lilge?
I move that we accept the proposed resolution regarding the settlement offer from Iron Shore.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Lilge, supported by Mrs. Hodgins. Any discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lilge, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Dr. Rodriguez? Mr. Lopez? I'm a yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Can I call your name twice to get you for less?
Once is more than enough.
Okay. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And finally, a motion to adjust our superintendent evaluation timeline. Anyone?
I can move that. I saw move.
Sounds great. It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? I'm a yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We're very close, guys. The only, we only have a couple more things. We'll go to report from Secretary and Announcements. Doc?
Thank you, Madam President. We invite the community and announce them tomorrow, April 2nd through Friday, April 9th, 2021, will be the spring break. We wish all the students and parents a break, and hopefully they're reading according to what they were telling us. Monday, April 12th, the school will resume, and the shore program begins that day, hopefully. We have also, Thursday, April 15th, will be a regular meeting, starting at 6 o'clock. There will be a regular meeting. I think that is all I have, Madam President. No meetingness Thursday, April 8th.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. Any comments from Dr. Rodriguez? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to communicate to all board members and the community in general. The yesterday was Cesare Chavez Day. We celebrate in Lancing many, many places, Michigan State University. Our students and many teachers follow the programs from Michigan State, but also Lancing Community College, the program and the Lucero Program, and the whole DEI, or Lancing Community College, has a celebration for Cesare Chavez, who is a leader for all of us, and is a leader in many core values, not only for Michigan, but for California, for the state, all the nation, but also for the whole world. I was really impressed by the students from Everett and how much they knew about Cesare Chavez and the vision and mission that he was having when he was alive. We were celebrating his legacy, and I had to congratulate Lancing Community College and the DEI Department and the Lucero Program for the great program that they had for all of us. Definitely the future, I hope that we will have in the curriculum is to study this leader. He's an example for all students, all citizens of the global citizenship. Thank you, and congratulations to everybody who celebrate that. And I hope that we continue celebrating not only one day, because yesterday in Michigan was Cesare Chavez Day, but the 365 days of the year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. Any further, Mr. Lopez?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Superintendent Sinicropi. I was able to send him a flyer from a program in Grand Rapids, also celebrating Chavez Day. And it had a competent, a really nice format for teachers to present to students. And so it was lesson planning, okay? It was there. The plan was there. And I hope that teachers and students took advantage of it. I know that some did register to see the program. I don't know how many. But nevertheless, it was, again, I want to thank Dr. Sinicropi. I just upgraded him, anyway. Sam Sinicropi for being, you know, receptive to things that we think that will help our students and our community. So, and again, that came from Grand Rapids, courtesy of Lupe Ramos Montini, who was recently a member of the State School Board of Education. And she does a yearly program in Grand Rapids. And like. and like we do in Lansing. But as a teacher, I appreciated the fact that she sent us the, the teaching plan for, for that particular occasion. So thank you very much.
Madam President?
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. I forgot to say the Lansing School District, thanks to the superintendent, I think he is going to stay, Mr. Sinicropi. He, also, many, many teachers and students participate. More than 700 emails was sending regarding the program that we were having in Lansing Community, Lansing Community College at 6 o'clock. And then, that this kind of move unnecessary, always necessary, but now more than ever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any other comments in this room? Okay, any other comments from Mrs. Willis, Mrs. Moore, or Dr. Burrows?
You know, Robin Moore did, did a lot for this program at LSC, so I want to thank her for that. Robin, thank you very much. It was great. I watched the whole program, by the way. Very nice.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Oh, it's an echo. I'm going to mute.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. With no further comments and with no further business before the board at 8:24, we are adjourned. I will see you April 15.